So I'm gonna call the order this Lacey City Council meeting on Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an agenda before us. We do need a motion to amend the original agenda because we've had one candidate who let us know this morning, or this afternoon, that he was not going to be applying today.
It's already removed.
It's already been removed from this agenda, so this is the corrected agenda.
Okay, I move that we accept the amended agenda as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. And so I will go through this evening's agenda. First of all, thank you all for being here and applying for the Lacey City Council position. This is obviously a big commitment to step up and put your name forward and be in front of us and answer some questions. And we look forward to this evening and we look forward to getting to know each one of you a little bit better. And we wish you all the best of luck. So Section 209 of the City Council Policy and Procedures Manual sets out the process for filling a council vacancy. Pursuant to that section and upon completion of the interviews, the council has determined the following voting process. At first, there will be some nominations. The mayor will ask for nominations from the council members. The council members are limited to one nomination each. Council members are not required to make a nomination. There is no second needed. Then the nominations are closed by a motion, a second, and a majority vote. Then there will be a deliberation period where the council members may deliberate on the nominated candidates. The mayor shall poll the council members to determine if they're prepared to vote. In the first round of voting, the council members will vote on each candidate in order nominated. The question for each candidate will be, "All those in favor of moving candidate X forward to the next round, say aye." All the candidates receiving a majority vote will be moved forward to the next round. Council members have unlimited votes in the first round. That means they could vote for more than one nominee. In the second round of voting, and all further rounds if necessary, council members will vote on each candidate in the order nominated. Council members are limited to just one vote in the second round and all further necessary rounds. For example, a council member can only cast one affirmative vote in the second round. And the question will be, "Council member," let's see, the question will be, "All those in favor of pointing candidate X to fill the council vacancy, say aye. And the candidate receiving a majority of votes from council, which is four or more, suspends any further voting." So, for example, four candidates could be nominated. If candidate A receives only two votes and candidate B receives four votes, that candidate B is declared the new council member and candidate C and D are not voted upon. The mayor shall declare the nominee receiving the majority vote as the new council member to be sworn in prior to the next regular council meeting, which is only in two days. Does anyone have any questions about that process? Okay, so for real quick, the candidates are in front of us right now. Could you just go through real quick and give your full name?
Nina Sasha-Denman.
T. Walton.
Stuart Ridgeway.
Sterling Redkey.
Jason Skyler.
Richard Bukowski.
Danielle Murray.
Harold Jules.
Gary Phillips.
Kristen Jacobson.
Natasha Nixon.
Great. So as of this moment, we are missing Randy Rusoga, who I think I butchered his last name. Rusga. He's not here, but he'll have till his allotted time. So we're following, each candidate has a 10-minute time to answer our six questions. We'll be posing, each one of us will pose a question. There'll be a timer right here that'll start, and you're limited to the 10 minutes. So if for some reason you can't make it through all six questions, when the timer goes off, that will be your time. And we'll go as time allows us. So maybe the second or third candidate doesn't take the full 10 minutes. We're gonna keep moving this process forward. And so if Randy's not here by his allotted time, then he will not be able to participate tonight. Does anyone have any questions? So there'll be 10 minutes, each candidate will 10 minutes. All the candidates will be outside and we'll call them in order that they applied, just as you're sitting there right now. We'll go through the 10 minutes. When you're done with your interview, you can stay in the room. When everyone's finished with their first 10 minutes, you will all go back out and you'll come back and have a three-minute closing remarks. Then after that three-minute closing remarks, we'll deliberate. Any questions?
Six people, what happens if there's a tie?
So if there's a tie, if there is no candidate receiving a majority vote this evening, we'll have to deliberate on that. But if for some reason we cannot come to a decision, we will discuss about what a possible next step would be, but if this council cannot come up with a decision, this vote would go to the county commission.
We do have 90 days from the date of the resignation. So if we weren't able to come to that decision tonight, it would not immediately go to the county.
Ninety days.
We would have time to continue working on it until we can either get four people on the same page or not.
Yeah.
No survivor contest, though.
Yeah. Let me think of an obstacle course, but that's up to us. So that is, that will be the agenda for this evening. If you would like, Linda, you can stay here, and the rest of the candidates, can you please go out in the hall?
You go out and to the right, there are chairs set up down the corridor.
There's chairs outside. And then who, which staff member is gonna be making sure?
They're in order.
Kelly?
Kelly.
Kelly or Steve? Steve? So right now, sorry, this is for this council, we just have the questions that you've submitted to me, and we just have it in the order of seniority in this case. That's how this was laid out. So if we're fine with this, my first, I would have the first question, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Hearn, then Councilman Greenstein, Stedman, and Cox would go in that order.
It's not really seniority.
It's, I don't know.
Hearn actually is the most seniority.
Seniority. After the mayor, the deputy mayor.
Where are they?
Under each person. So I can't see yours, but if you go here, these are the questions.
And be sure to write their name at the top of the sheet.
So, and I will get this 10 minutes started. And are you ready?
Born ready.
So Linda, the city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund from reserves and a public art fund. Given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives?
Yes, and I'll expand on that. Part of what makes a quality city is having those extracurricular activities for a community. Those types of activities allow a community to grow and flourish, so absolutely I do.
Great, thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
I envision a city where even our most at-risk demographics are healthy, are living lives that are fulfilling and lives that are not, just simply not the way things are now, where we have a demographic of people who live far below the poverty line, are living on the streets and malnourished, where our children and our school systems are going hungry. I envision a Lacey that is thriving economically, that where people are making living wage jobs, where people are flourishing so much that they have time to do those arts things, to develop themselves in ways other than professionally. Because I feel sometimes that people, that's all they focus on, is that aspect of their life. And although this is a wonderful city where we are highly rated as a city, and I know that a lot of our population lives very fulfilling lives, but it would be wonderful to look back and say, "Do you remember when people, our children, didn't have food? Do you remember when recycling was a thing?" You know? It would be nice to see, actually, to look back and say, "We started something that created a booming economic presence." I envision a place where recycling is something to manufacture. So I think I put this in my application. There was a model that I saw where private sector recycling came in, and they used that recycling to build playgrounds, to build roads, to build building material itself, and making that more affordable and creating a more economic, or not economic, environmentally friendly place. Can I also add to that? Excuse me. The city of Lacey does not suffer from crime. We are the 11th safest city in the state. However, we do have a silent crime that happens here quite often. It's human trafficking as well as domestic violence. Domestic violence is the highest rating for women and children who are homeless in this area, and human trafficking happens right here within our city, and Councilmember Hearn knows that. And we've recently had a sting, what was it, two, three months ago? So that is something I'd like to see not happening here either.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this, since we're in a campaign cycle for this elections, do you feel it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
I do, because I feel that longevity is important. So someone who is dedicated enough to come here and to sit in front of you and then take on the responsibilities that you currently have, and the responsibilities of campaigning and earning the vote of the people, is someone who's desirable on this council. That is dedication, that is investment in their city, investment in this council, and I absolutely think whoever does get this should run.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
Well, of course, the city has to run well. We have to have emergency services, we have to have clean water, we have to have a city where people feel safe, those, where our basic needs are met, absolutely. That, well, if you look at the budget, I think, what is it, 46% of the budget goes toward utilities? Obviously, that's a big part, right? And then 30-something percent goes toward fire and police, right? So those, just based on the budget, would tell me those are the priorities of the council. But I certainly think that the council should think about the lifestyle of the people as well. But to answer your question, those are the two priorities, to pass a budget and a comprehensive plan.
Nice. Well, thank you for applying. What makes you the most qualified candidate for this position?
I have not just jumped into this. Almost two years ago, I took it upon myself to learn. I am a graduate, the first graduate, of Emerge Washington, which is a program that trains women to run successful campaigns and achieve office. I did this not because I had lofty goals of being a politician, but to see if I was even capable of doing something like this, that it's something that I wanted to do, something that I could be dedicated to doing. So I took that upon myself over a year ago, almost two years ago. On top of that, I have worked in this community, not only as a business owner, but in the nonprofit leadership realm. I belong to a Rotary Club as well as a Zonta Club. I am dedicated to this community, and I'm dedicated to doing this work because I've taken that time to realize whether this is something that I can, want to, and am capable of doing. So yes, I think I offer those things.
All righty. So bringing up the rear here, homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. So what do you think the city of Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
I was very pleased to see that the county had considered and that the city of Lacey looked, seemed favorable of creating a mitigation site within the city of Lacey through my research, because when I saw that, I asked myself, okay, has the city done this before? Is this a good place for the city to have it? And I found that in 2009, we already had a tent camp or a city there, which was managed by the local faith groups. And there was no incident, and people were overall not affected by that. Not only that, but we are building those wraparound services within our city, like the food bank, behavioral health resources down the road, intercity transit. So those things are here. To add to that, homelessness is a regional issue. It's not for one area in particular to deal with. And so knowing that the city of Lacey has taken on the initiative to be a compassionate community, I am pleased that we're, that the city is stepping up, or potentially stepping up, to do something to help this region and to help our, our community grow.
Great. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Ooh, I have time left.
I'm gonna start your 10 minutes now. So I have the first question. The city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that we have out of reserves, and we also have a public art fund. Given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
This was already pre-planned. All of that money's already been set forward. Well, I think if the planning has already been done and then you've discovered that that's where the money needs to go, yes, I would support that. And the reason I would support that is because you've already pre-planned for that to happen and that you obviously know where your resources are coming from and where the budget is. And so, yeah, I would support that.
Great, thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years or 20 years?
I see Lacey, I see Lacey growing at quite a, quite a rate, and with growth comes a lot of other things. A lot of people think growth is the best thing that can happen to a city. Sometimes it is, but sometimes it's not, because with that growth comes a lot of other situations, infrastructure, problems that you're gonna have on the street. Of course, I wanna see Lacey grow, but I wanna see it grow in a right way. I wanna see it in a measured growth and a safe growth.
Since we are in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
Yes, I would think it's very important if you're going this far to get on the council now, that you wanna continue what you're doing. So certainly to go into the election and try to win the election in November.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
It's a lot, that's a loaded question there. There's a lot of things going on with city government. You've got so many different departments that are so vital to the city, everything from city streets to your emergency preparedness, including fire, police. I think what's most important is to have a handle on all of the activities that's going on and develop it in a coordinated way.
What makes you the most qualified candidate? And thank you for applying and your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Councilman. I have spent my entire career in the public sector. I have, I don't like just being a part of a community. I like to be a part of the community that has an active role in the citizens of the community. And I've done that for my entire career. I come with experience, I come with skill sets, I come with knowledge. I've taken, I've been in situations where I had to lead and did a fine job leading. I've been on, in front of the cameras a lot of times. I know public relations, I've done that. I am here to offer that skill set, that knowledge, that experience to you, the city of Lacey.
All righty. Well, you can give us a good, long answer for the next one.
Make it a good question, Karen.
It is. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. So what do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
It is a problem, but it's not just a problem for Lacey, it's a problem for this whole county. And I think what's going on now is a good thing. It's just not Lacey, but it's Lacey, Olympia, it's Tumwater, it's Thurston County that are coming together and they're trying to plan, what can we do? Where's the funding gonna come from? And how are we gonna address the homeless situation so that it just doesn't keep multiplying itself? Are our rents gonna go up? Is it gonna create more homeless issues? Are people taking advantage of being homeless that really don't wanna come out of that situation? So I think those are all things that have to be looked at, and each one is very important. If you wanna stop homelessness, you've gotta go beyond just giving everybody the money to come out. You've gotta give 'em a job. You've gotta give them mental health, if that's what they're suffering from. If it's drugs, and a lot of it is drugs, there's gotta be some drug rehab being involved here, or you're not gonna get anywhere. That's just not gonna work. So there's a lot of issues and a lot of dynamics that are happening all at the same time. But I say for the ones that are homeless and the ones that wanna move up and get out, those are the ones we should concentrate and get them out of the homeless situation that they're in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's good.
Yep.
Lot of fast writing. Hope I can read it.
Guess this is a hot seat?
It is now.
First of all, thank you for being here and applying and stepping up for this.
It's my pleasure.
We really appreciate it. I'm about ready to start 10 minutes here. So I'm at first, the city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that we have out of reserves, and we also have a public art fund. But given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
What was the last part again, please?
Do you support these two initiatives, our economic development fund and the public art fund?
Oh, absolutely. I think economic development is an important part of the city of Lacey. We've always been known as being a business-friendly community, and I think that that will go a long ways to helping to cement that relationship with, in the Thurston County. And as far as the arts fund, the, having a son who is in the arts, you know, I'm very supportive of arts, and I think that we can make good use of it for the, further the enjoyment of the citizens of Lacey.
Great, thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision of Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
My vision for Lacey the next 15 to 20 years is a vibrant business community with a parks district that will support the citizens of Lacey. Now, I also look at Lacey as being the future of sports tourism in Thurston County, because we have a lot of things that can draw people in, and it will go a long way to filling the hotels, restaurants, the lodging tax, can go a long way to help Lacey to flourish.
Since we are in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, excuse me, do you feel that this is, this appointee, that it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
No, I don't think it's necessary to seek elected office. As I put in my application, it's the accepted fact that incumbents have a leg up on the, in the election. And I think that the citizens should vote on the candidates on their own merits, and so that's why I made the decision not to run, but to apply for the office.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
The most important responsibility is the city government is, as far as I'm concerned, is public safety. We need to, we've had an excellent police department the whole time I've lived here. They have the support of the community, and they're very involved with the community. And with the homeless situation, the way it's coming about, we're gonna need public safety officers more and more over the next few years.
Good evening, Stuart.
Hi, Mike.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
Although I'm not a native of Thurston County, I moved here in 1995, and I immediately jumped in, opened a small business, my accounting practice, and struggled over the first few years, like most small businesses do. We did have to leave for two years when my wife got transferred back to the Washington, DC area, but we, as soon as she was eligible to retire, we moved back here to make it our permanent home. And I've been involved in the community the whole time, even when I was away, I still remained involved with the community, stated member of the Lacey Chamber, kept up on what was going on. And I'm a firm believer that Lacey can be the best city in Thurston County. It already is, as far as I'm concerned. And I think that by community involvement over the years with the chamber, with Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts with my sons, with the Park and Recreation Department, they played baseball, and all the other things that are going on, but I've been a big community supporter for the last 20-plus years, and I think it And I think it could need to continue that way.
All righty. You referenced homelessness. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
It's a good question. And if we all knew the answer to it, it would already have been done. I understand there's a consideration for a mitigation site up on Carpenter Road. But what we need to address is the root cause of homelessness. Whether it's, it's not just people needing a place to live, but a lot of it is drug addiction, mental health. And we've got a couple of mental health hospitals that are opening up here real soon. And I think we need to address the root cause of it. The fact that the homeless are not here shows that we're not kowtowing to them. While they're here, but they're not in the greater numbers there are in other places. And we need to, and those that are in the mitigation sites or in other areas, we need to hold them accountable for what they're doing.
Is your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Sterling. So I'm about ready to start your 10 minutes here. So the City of Lacey has a $2.5 million Economic Development Fund that we've, we have out of reserves. And we also have a Public Art Fund. Given, but given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
Yeah, I do support it because I think when we, as a community, are investing in the youth and in families here, it will get more and more people to want to live in Lacey. And living, when I lived in Bellingham for college, I saw how investments in the community can help more people enjoy the community. So I think that is one of the best ways to do it, is by investing in economic development programs.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
That's a good question. Definitely more growth. Being a suburb out of Seattle, we obviously will get more and more people living here. My real vision and the reason I want this position, and I'll say it in my little three-minute speech at the end basically, is I want to hopefully introduce baby bonds as a piloting program in the city. It's a cost-efficient program. And I think if we were to do that, we would be able to grow even more rapidly than we are, but also be investing in the future. And that's my vision for the next 15 to 20 years.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
I answered that I was maybe seeking it, but I've decided I'm not going to seek reelection for the sole purpose for fairness and the democratic process because of the incumbent advantage that an incumbent would have on the ballot. I think it's a 2% pop is what it's rated as. So I've decided I, I think that the person that gets appointed shouldn't be running for reelection in November.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
Investment in the youth and in working-class families because of, that is the future, as the question was asked. The future of the community is the youth. And investing in the youth is what probably is the most important thing to do as a community and as a city government. Because we know the, we know the people that live here better than the federal government or better than the state government because we do live here. So that is what I think is by far the most important thing in the city government's duties, is to help push the youth into more prosperity.
Good evening, Sterling. Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
I think my educational background. Just graduating college last year with political science as a degree. I understand political science doesn't translate straight into politics. That is what I thought it did, but that's untrue. But I think learning about city government from a Watcom County Councilman, Todd Donovan, in Bellingham and being mentored by him has prepared me quite well for a position like this. Obviously, I am pretty young, green behind the ears. But I think that my educational experience and my knowledge on in particular policies is what suits me best for a position like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Righty. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
That's a good question. A lot of people try to answer this question. There's not an easy answer. I think realistically homelessness needs to be tackled at a federal level and have the money trickle down. As a city government, there is limited things that we could do because of the economies that we have here. I think the best thing that we could do is look at countries like Finland. There's been a lot of research done on homelessness and how they've tackled the problem. Obviously, they did it as a national economy. But I think if you look towards some of those programs, Housing First, I think is what it's called, that is probably the best and actually cheapest way to tackle homelessness compared to what a lot of other people are offering up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that good?
That's your time. Thank you much. I'm about ready to start your 10 minutes here. So Jason, the City of Lacey has a $2.5 million Economic Development Fund that we established out of reserves. And we also have a Public Art Fund. But given the increasing costs of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
I would support both of those initiatives. I believe they're both important. Economic development, of course, encourages jobs and growth. And the City of Lacey is seeing an exponential growth right now in residential housing. Families coming in, a lot of military families. So we need opportunities for the spouses of those military families for jobs here locally. So I believe an economic development plan is important. I believe the other, was it the Arts?
Public Art.
Public Art Fund. I believe that's important to put on for stuff like the Lacey Spring Fair and the South Sound BBQ. Public Arts Funds is important to have places for the families to go to. And so that would be why I would support both of those. I'd try to find a way to include both of those in any kind of budget.
So if you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
My vision would be to see Lacey continue to grow and be a great place to raise a family. I've been here since 2001 and I have seen it grow. It's been a great place for me and my family. And I'd like to continue to be a great place. Some of the things that I would do, I mean, we're seeing with the growth, traffic congestions, which isn't necessarily a bad thing in itself. It means folks are coming by and shopping locally. I would try to find ways to, to put money into local jobs and growing as opposed to trying to widening roads or adding roads. Everybody's talking about, you know, creating different roads and putting money into that to try to counter the influx of traffic congestions. But I would try to find ways to put the money into local projects, shopping centers, to try to keep those folks who are coming through here and get them to shop around and spend money in Lacey as opposed to just passing by.
Since we are in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
I believe it is important. I mean, this process, it is an important process, but it is time-consuming. So if you're, if someone's going to be going for this position, I believe that they should be willing and wanting to run for reelection. It's just something that I think it would be beneficial for the City of Lacey members, tax dollars. I mean, like I said, this costs money. It takes time. Everybody's busy. We might as well just do this one time.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
First, I think the city government needs to listen to the members of the community. I think that's one of the most important things. It's really hard to, I mean, listening is easy, but listening actively is, I think, more challenging. So I think actually hearing what folks are saying is the most important part of the city government, responding to what people are saying, showing them that you're actually listening. I think that goes a long way. And going out there and going to those events that I mentioned earlier, letting the folks know that you're involved, that, you know, the government's not just in the back shadows doing, you know, the important roles that they do, but actually at the forefront too and out there and being vocal and involved in the, in the community, I think is important.
Good evening, Jason. Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
So I've always had a strong interest in, in politics. Some of my undergrad classes were political science and society and how the two harmonize and influence one another. I went on to pursue a career in, in law, got my Juris Doctorate. And that only strengthened my, my desire to run for some kind of public office, to be involved in government in some way. I believe being a member of the community since 2001, the City of Lacey has educated me. I graduated from River Ridge High School, graduated from St. Martin's University. The City of Lacey has employed me. At the age of 16, I started at Walmart. I went on to open the Cabela's as one of the first folks working there. Spent three years at Hoxbury Casino. I went on to open a house cleaning business, Magic Mops Professional Cleaning Services. So I run a business out of Lacey. Most of my employees call Lacey home. All that being said, I think it's time that I give back to the City of Lacey. And I think that my education, my experience, my passion, I think that would make me a strong candidate.
Thank you.
All righty. Homelessness is a growing person, a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should do or should be doing to address homelessness?
I agree it is, it is definitely a problem in Thurston County. It's actually a problem nationwide. Closer to home, Seattle's having a huge problem. What I would like to see Lacey do is partner with St. Martin's University. They have programs over there that I believe that their students would be interested in. And that's why a lot, a lot of the larger cities that have Ivy League colleges, do they create think tanks at their Ivy League schools. I believe, you know, somebody went over to St. Martin's and asked them to create something like that, maybe get some of their students involved to help us. We don't got to do this alone. I don't, I don't know if anybody has done it before, but I think it's a great resource that we have just right next door to help us create such a, such a group of thoughts and ideas to help us address it. It needs to be addressed in, in a, in a way that's understanding to the folks who are homeless. I think the answer is not incarceration. Many of you know that I work at the Thurston County Public Defense and that's a large part of my clientele. So it needs to be a thoughtful process. And it is one that every, every city's struggling with. But I believe that we have a great resource right next door. I know I've mentioned to Olympia officials that they should be using Evergreen College over there as one of their resources. But as a student, you know, recently, I would have been thrilled to be on such a community active, active program of some sort. And I'm sure that the school would give them credit. So it would be beneficial to all parties.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you. That's your time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we taking a break at any point?
We are. We're taking a break. After Danielle. So after the, we have three more.
Okay. I only looked at the agenda.
That helps.
Sorry.
Hey, Richard. I'm about ready to start your time now. So the City of Lacey has a $2.5 million Economic Development Fund that we established out of reserves. And we also have a Public Art Fund. Given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
I support them to a, a degree. Arts and culture is very important to the residents in the city. But I would make sure that we're not using that, those revenues or those reserves foolishly. There's a lot of things that are pressing the city probably. And after looking at a complete budget to see, you know, where that money should be spent. But I have no objection for the arts and culture, definitely.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
My vision would be planned growth. A city needs to expand its tax base, of course. And I think that we have, we have enough land here to expand for both commercial businesses and retail businesses and homes. And I believe in the last 15 years, the city has done a great job. And I think that it would carry over to the following 15 years. As long as we live within our budget and don't get crazy with spending money that's not necessary.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
No, not at all. Actually, I feel that I personally, I'm not going to, I'm not looking to run for public office after this. And I feel that if a person gets appointed who's going to run for office, I feel they, they have an unfair advantage in the long run because they'll have tremendous name recognition and, and their constituents or people in the city may just vote for them without following up, you know, what they're really about. without following up, you know, what they're really about, how they feel. So I'm really against that.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
Well, the responsibility of all government is to protect its people. But in a local municipality like Lacey, basically it is to, I would say, to, again, plan future growth and to definitely live within its means. There's a, you know, a lot of things have to be done. Lacey has done a great job with its, with its roads and its water and it, we have great parks and great schools and, and we need to keep this up. We're above the state average in just about every category. Our police department is great and we need to live within our means and even during good times and to make sure that the money is there for the future.
Good evening, Richard. Thanks for your willingness to serve, appreciate it. What, what makes you the most qualified candidate?
I, well, first of all, I am the treasurer of one of the biggest HOAs in the city of Lacey. I'm the treasurer of a development that has 845 homes and I have the fiduciary responsibility of making sure that we live within our budget, that our monies are well spent. For an HOA of my size, we have a, a very high reserve compared to most other HOAs in Lacey. And I'm very budget conscious, you know, because there are too many cities that, that have monetary problems. And as somebody else would say, I, I really enjoy living in Lacey and I love this city. And I, and I'm pretty much up on, you know, what's going on in the city. And I think I would be a, a great city council person. I have no further aspirations, but I think I'd be great in just filling in for the next six or seven months and helping the council get done what has to be done for the city.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
Homelessness, well, I think we have to differentiate what homelessness really is. I think that people that, real homeless people, people that have lost their, their jobs or their homes due to financial problems or medical problems, I feel that we should try to help those people. There are people that have mental health problems and I feel that the, the state needs to put these people into hospitals or some type of housing. And then, of course, we have street people. And it's my opinion that we should, we should put the street people on a bus and take them to San Francisco and get rid of them. I mean, it's, it's really very difficult, but the real people that are homeless, they probably have working experience. If you live out of a car or you live on the street, it's very hard to get hired by a company or by, you know, a small business. And I don't know if we need to give these people grants, temporary grants, to get them into an apartment for three months or six months and pay their rent and, just like the welfare program, give them food and let them get back on their feet. But those are the real homeless people. The mental health people and the street people, it's a national problem and right now, nobody really has an answer for it. But I would really hate to see them here in Lacey because we have a great city. And, you know, it's not good for the children to see them and, and as adults, we don't want to see them either.
And that's your time.
Thank you.
So I take it Randy didn't show up. Danielle, I'm about ready to start your time here. Thank you. So the city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that we have established our reserves and we also have a, a public art fund. But given the increasing cost of a local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
I do support the two initiatives because they, one with the art initiative, it gives local businesses and the community growth for, and the opportunities for the community to be involved and it actually gives back to the community. Also with development is in the same, as you develop, you become more equity and grows the economy in your developed locations. So I would support them very much because I think it gives the opportunity for more growth for other opportunities and projects or initiatives.
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
My vision for Lacey would be to make and maintain a environment for families to grow. I, with the crisis of the homeless population throughout the country, but more so in Western Washington, I feel that we need to kind of focus more on the growth of our children and developing that aspect because if we fix the future, then it could also help with the current crisis that we face.
Since we are in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seek elected office or not in November?
I do think it's important that they seek office. I think establishing a place and understanding the city council and making a name for yourself can help grow the community and get the support. So when election time comes, the voters know what they're getting and can see a forefront of who they're electing instead of just a name and their personal development instead of how they've developed and helped the community.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
I think the most important part of city government is to give the people in the community a voice, listen to their wants and needs, but also be a, almost like a sounding board so that you can help guide an educated voter. Because I think once the public is knowledgeable, they can help see where this government is coming from as well. And so I think the city is kind of the first step for any voters to see how the rest of the government is ran, county and then state and even national. So the city is the first stepping stone for the voters to have a voice.
Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
I would say that I am the most qualified candidate with my background. I worked for the city of Bainbridge Island in their public works department. I also worked for Kitsap County in their auditor's office and their public works department. So I have a background in local government, seeing how different departments and run. I also served for the Washington National Guard for six years. So I have learned where, when there is a mission, you don't always have the necessary tools to reach that mission. So finding a well-balanced and like almost crossfire and, or change of fire to reach your mission and still meeting those missions and those goals. So I have a vast knowledge and education in doing so with my past career experience.
Thank you.
So homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
I think that Lacey should do to address homelessness is find the root of the problem, which is not necessarily homeless, it's the drug epidemic. There are organizations out there set up to help people truly need, but we have so much work, minimum wage jobs even that to help people get on their feet. And there's programs to help get people on the feet. So I think Lacey's part in doing so is not to enable drug addicts because drug addicts are very well, they've learned to adapt and know where they can get their needs to get their next fix. It's most family members who have drug addicts, they have to let their members hit rock bottom. But as long as any organization keeps enabling it, they're never going to hit the rock bottom. They're perfectly fine living on the streets. But the true homeless population, I feel they have the resources, they seeking guidance to reaching out and showing them the resources that are out there for them, for the ones that truly want the help is out there. So more of a guidance than putting a Band-Aid on the current crisis.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is this our break? Or is the next one?
And, alright, one more. Alright, not that. Is our break. So we're going to take a
Ten minute.
Ten minute break and then we'll get started in, in 10 minutes.
Okay. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
I think that Lacey should do to address homelessness is find the root of the problem, which is not necessarily homeless. It's the drug epidemic. There are organizations out there set up to help people truly need, but we have so much work, minimum wage jobs even that to help people get on their feet. And there's programs to help get people on their feet. So I think Lacey's part in doing so is not to enable drug addicts because drug addicts are very well, they've learned to adapt and know where they can get their needs to get their next fix. It's most family members who have drug addicts, they have to let their members hit rock bottom. But as long as any organization keeps enabling it, they're never going to hit the rock bottom. They're perfectly fine living on the streets. But the true homeless population, I feel they have the resources. They seeking guidance to reaching out and showing them the resources that are out there for them, for the ones that truly want the help is out there. So more of a guidance than putting a Band-Aid on the current crisis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Is this our break? Where's the next one?
And, alright, one more. Alright, not that. Is our break. So, we're going to take a
Ten minute.
Ten-minute break. And then we'll get started in ten minutes.
Okay.
Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next fifteen years to twenty years?
Wow. I've been a resident of Lacey for a long time and the growth has just certainly been substantial. And I'm not sure the infrastructure's keeping up with it. Traffic would probably be my number one concern and issue right now. And while I don't have an answer on how to facilitate improvements of that, I'm sure the city staff has the ability to do that. But I think that's probably one of the biggest things going on right now. And I have some ideas of some traffic changes, but I'm not sure this is going to be the time to share those.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seeks elected office or not in November?
Well, I think that's entirely up to the person that's appointed. I could only answer for myself and what my opinion on that would be. And I'm not so sure that it would give anybody a definite advantage or a leg up just because they're appointed to fill an unexpired term. But I think that rests with the individual person that's making that decision.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
I think probably, having watched a lot of these meetings on TV, I think it's watching and being the custodian of the public funds, making sure they're spent appropriately in terms of road maintenance and whatever the other needs are for the city. And I think probably just oversight of the public funds.
Good evening Harold. Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
I think probably my longstanding residence in the county. I've probably lived in this county longer than anyone in this room. And I've seen the growth from Pacific Avenue being a two-lane road in each direction to a gas station on every corner at Slater, Kenney and Pacific. I've seen the growth in the profession I've worked in. I've had even a closer firsthand look at it. And I probably know the town better than anybody. Just for your information, I don't know if you saw my application. I was the manager of Lacey Post Office for ten years. I've been a city letter carrier in Olympia, Lacey and Tomwater for another eight years. So I know the town very well. And I've just, I've seen the growth in it and I think I know the places that improvements need to be made and things like that.
Alrighty. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next fifteen years to twenty years?
Wow. I've been a resident of Lacey for a long time and the growth has just certainly been substantial. And I'm not sure the infrastructure's keeping up with it. Traffic would probably be my number one concern and issue right now. And while I don't have an answer on how to facilitate improvements of that, I'm sure the city staff has the ability to do that. But I think that's probably one of the biggest things going on right now. And I have some ideas of some traffic changes, but I'm not sure this is going to be the time to share those.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seeks elected office or not in November?
Well, I think that's entirely up to the person that's appointed. I could only answer for myself and what my opinion on that would be. And I'm not so sure that it would give anybody a definite advantage or a leg up just because they're appointed to fill an unexpired term. But I think that rests with the individual person that's making that decision.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
I think probably, having watched a lot of these meetings on TV, I think it's watching and being the custodian of the public funds, making sure they're spent appropriately in terms of road maintenance and whatever the other needs are for the city. And I think probably just oversight of the public funds.
Good evening Harold. Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
I think probably my longstanding residence in the county. I've probably lived in this county longer than anyone in this room. And I've seen the growth from Pacific Avenue being a two-lane road in each direction to a gas station on every corner at Slater, Kenney and Pacific. I've seen the growth in the profession I've worked in. I've had even a closer firsthand look at it. And I probably know the town better than anybody. Just for your information, I don't know if you saw my application. I was the manager of Lacey Post Office for ten years. I've been a city letter carrier in Olympia, Lacey and Tomwater for another eight years. So I know the town very well. And I've just, I've seen the growth in it and I think I know the places that improvements need to be made and things like that.
Alrighty. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next fifteen years to twenty years?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I was not aware Lacey had that large of a homeless problem. I'm sure there are pockets of homeless people, but I haven't seen them out of sight, out of mind, I guess. I have been following the news closely in terms of the Olympia homeless situation. And I guess one of the questions I've had to ask myself, looking at Lacey's position lately in terms of establishing a homeless community in Lacey, which brings to mind another question. The paper always says it's at the corner of Carpenter Road and Martin Way. And I'm not sure where that would be. All the corners are occupied. And they show a picture of it, but I'm not familiar with that area. And I guess my question would be is if we don't have that big of a homeless problem, then why are we going out and soliciting homeless to live in Lacey? I just don't get that. And one of the selling points I see is it's going to be close to the new Lacey Food Bank on Martin Way, which brings to mind another issue. I've seen Robert Coit, the food bank director, get on TV and talk about how the people are afraid to come down to the downtown food bank because of the homeless situation. And even the employees that are working down there, as volunteers, are a little afraid to come down to work. So I guess I'm asking myself, why would we want to encourage homelessness or in Lacey for those folks to come to our food bank and generate the same problems they're experiencing downtown? I just, I don't, I don't get that. I must be missing something.
Thank you.
And that's your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you Harold.
Think my allergy pills are wearing off.
Hello? Hey Gary. I'm about ready to start your time now. So the city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that, you know, we've established out of some reserves. And we also have a public art fund. But given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
Well, I do support the arts. Primarily because it's very pro-family. I've always seen the city of Lacey as very pro-family. It's also pro-business because it helps bring the businesses that support the arts back into the community and they have a lot more ability to network with each other and to provide a little bit more growth for other families looking at, potentially looking at the city of Lacey.
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next fifteen years to twenty years?
I think Lacey has huge potential for growth. We have massive location along the I-5 corridor. I've lived here for almost fifty years myself. My dad still lives in the same house we moved into. Lacey economically is booming and I think it has even more potential to boom if we could convince more affordable housing for people that want to retire into this area. That's, I think, an untapped market that can be looked at. Keeping retirees in this area is a great, great growth potential for the city of Lacey. So I admire the city of Lacey for the amount of growth that has happened in the fifty years that I've lived here.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seeks elected office or not in November?
I don't think it's important, but if, I would intend to run despite whether appointed or not. I've always had a very large interest in how city government works versus where I currently work.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
Health and safety of the citizenry. I'm very, very much pro-safety of the citizens. As you know, I'm, I work at the Thurston County Sheriff's Office in the Corrections Bureau. So safety is very paramount to me. But also the health of the community is massively important as well. Without a healthy community, I don't think healthy growth of a community to expand will work.
Good evening Gary.
Good evening.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
Well, like everybody here, I'm a quiet, active volunteer of a few different nonprofits within the community. I've volunteered with homeless backpacks. I've volunteered with Homes First. I think it's important that a community member gets active in their community. Having that said, me personally, I think I can take those experiences both from my current employment and my volunteer work, as well as small business that I have participated in with, working with low and no-cost nonprofits with marketing and website development.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
Well, first and foremost, unless there's, there's an accountability aspect, a person needs to be held accountable whether they're housed or homeless. But jail's not a first-line defense. I believe that government has a responsibility, within reason, to help the underprivileged, which includes the homeless. Maybe some avenues that we could look at as a city partnered with the other jurisdictions in the areas and maybe with some of the other nonprofits, opening small coffee stands, pizza shops. It's worked in other areas and I think something similar to that would work in Lacey.
Thank you.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thanks Gary.
Hi Chris.
Hi there.
So I'll start your ten minutes now.
Okay.
So the city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that, you know, we've established out of some reserves. And we also have a public art fund. But given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
Well, I do support the arts. Primarily because it's very pro-family. I've always seen the city of Lacey as very pro-family. It's also pro-business because it helps bring the businesses that support the arts back into the community and they have a lot more ability to network with each other and to provide a little bit more growth for other families looking at, potentially looking at the city of Lacey.
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next fifteen years to twenty years?
I think Lacey has huge potential for growth. We have massive location along the I-5 corridor. I've lived here for almost fifty years myself. My dad still lives in the same house we moved into. Lacey economically is booming and I think it has even more potential to boom if we could convince more affordable housing for people that want to retire into this area. That's, I think, an untapped market that can be looked at. Keeping retirees in this area is a great, great growth potential for the city of Lacey. So I admire the city of Lacey for the amount of growth that has happened in the fifty years that I've lived here.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seeks elected office or not in November?
I don't think it's important, but if, I would intend to run despite whether appointed or not. I've always had a very large interest in how city government works versus where I currently work.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
Health and safety of the citizenry. I'm very, very much pro-safety of the citizens. As you know, I'm, I work at the Thurston County Sheriff's Office in the Corrections Bureau. So safety is very paramount to me. But also the, the health of the community is massively important as well. Without a healthy community, I don't think healthy growth of a community to expand will work.
Good evening Gary.
Good evening.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. What makes you the most qualified candidate?
Well, like everybody here, I'm a quiet, active volunteer of a few different nonprofits within the community. I've volunteered with homeless backpacks. I've volunteered with Homes First. I think it's important that a community member gets active in their community. Having that said, me personally, I think I can take those experiences both from my current employment and my volunteer work, as well as small business that I have participated in with, working with low and no-cost nonprofits with marketing and website development.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
Well, first and foremost, unless there's, there's an accountability aspect, a person needs to be held accountable whether they're housed or homeless. But jail's not a first-line defense. I believe that government has a responsibility, within reason, to help the underprivileged, which includes the homeless. Maybe some avenues that we could look at as a city partnered with the other jurisdictions in the areas and maybe with some of the other nonprofits, opening small coffee stands, pizza shops. It's worked in other areas and I think something similar to that would work in Lacey.
Thank you.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thanks Gary.
Hi Chris.
Hi there.
So I'll start your ten minutes now.
Okay.
So the city of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that we started out of reserves. And we also have a public art fund. But given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
That's a great question. Thank you. I do support those two initiatives because I think that, for me, one of the most important things that a city does is be for the people that live there. And I think a public arts fund and economic development fund not only support the residents of the city, but they also help to support growth, encouraging businesses. And they also help to contribute to quality of life in the city and make this a place that people want to live and they want to be with their families and that they enjoy living. So I do support those. I think those are smart investments in the city's future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Obviously. If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next fifteen years to twenty years?
I love that question because I think that's how we all think about like what we're doing in our lives generally. I don't know that we all have fifteen-year plans. Maybe it's five or ten-year plans. But, so for me, my daughter is nine years old, so I look, in fifteen years she'll be twenty-four. So for me, it's about her growth through the system and it's about what she, what we do as a family as she grows. So we are at the beginning of our time taking advantage of the services here in Lacey, the parks, the public schools, the opportunities for events. So for me, I see a lot of growth filling in the services. I would love to see wraparound services that provide transit for people to get to all the growth that we've had here. I would love to see continuing investment in making our parks really diversified and accessible to a lot of people. I really like what the city is doing to make streets more people-friendly and safer for people, the walking and biking trails. So the City of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that we started out of reserves. And we also have a, a public art fund. But given the increasing cost of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
That's a great question. Thank you. I do support those two initiatives because I think that, for me, one of the most important things that a city does is be for the people that live there. And I think a public arts fund and economic development fund not only support the residents of the city, but they also help to support growth, encouraging businesses. And they also help to contribute to quality of life in the city and make this a place that people want to live and they want to be with their families and that they enjoy living. So I do support those. I think those are smart investments in the city's future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
I love that question because I think that's how we all think about, like, what we're doing in our lives generally. I don't know that we all have 15-year plans. Maybe it's five or 10-year plans. But so for me, my daughter is nine years old, so I look, in 15 years, she'll be 24. So for me, it's about her growth through the system and it's about what she, what we do as a family as she grows. So we are at the beginning of our time taking advantage of the services here in Lacey, the parks, the public schools, the opportunities for events. So for me, I see a lot of growth filling in the services. I would love to see wraparound services that provide transit for people to get to all the growth that we've had here. I would love to see continuing investment in making our parks really diversified and accessible to a lot of people. I really like what the city is doing to make streets more people-friendly and safer for people, the walking and biking trails, making sure they're accessible and connect for people. I really like seeing that sort of stuff. So I would want to further that because I think that helps the city move forward and being a place that people really want to live. And when people want to live here, people also want to do business here.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel that it's important that this appointee seeks elected office or not in November?
Thank you for that. So I did want to get a chance to address that. So I actually was the second-to-last person to turn in my application. And this was the last question I addressed because I wasn't sure what to say about it. And in the end, I went with my original gut feeling, which was that the people who have already made it clear that they're going to run for this office ran thinking this would be an open seat without an incumbent. So I don't want to jump in and run for that office and change the landscape that they assumed would be there. I also think that coming as an incumbent and running for this office in November would give me maybe an unfair advantage for those candidates and also to the voters of Lacey who would have not had a chance to see them in office, but would have had a chance to see me in office. Thank you.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
I think the paramount responsibility of city government is the wise and strategic investment of taxpayer funds. That's what we do is we make smart choices with that money and we decide based on input, what is the best thing for the residents of Lacey? What is the best thing for businesses of Lacey that's going to ensure that 15, 20-year future we talked about? So for me, it's about the investment, wise investments that are going to pay off in the long run and will benefit the city. Thank you.
Good evening, Kristin.
Good evening.
Thanks, yeah, thanks for your willingness to serve.
Thank you very much.
What makes you the most qualified candidate?
That's great. Thank you for asking that. I think it's, the city has given a lot to me and my family. This is where my daughter was born. This was where we bought our first house. It's the house we are still living in. And where I was able to buy and grow and then eventually sell my business. So I'm looking forward to this opportunity to give back. I feel like this is, came at a great time for me. I'm at a place where I can start to reevaluate and reset what my days look like. And I'm really interested in continuing in public service in community and making those my focus. So I think this is a great time for that. I'm also, we have, I recently took a course on cities and communication and I became really interested in land use, which sounds kind of crazy because it's land use, right? But I really do think that how, Lacey has this great opportunity as it grows to take advantage of the lands that we have. And we get to be really smart about what we do with them. So I think it's a really great time to be part of helping to plan the City of Lacey's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. What do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
I agree. I read this article recently. I agree with Mayor Ryder that it is not an Olympia-only issue. And I agree with, it sounds like everybody that it is no longer an Olympia-only issue. People experiencing homelessness are in the City of Lacey as well. So I know there has been a homeless services hub proposed. And I don't know the exact location of that. I've, I think I've seen an idea of where it might be. So what I support with that hub is services that are in a location where they can actually be utilized and can benefit the people who need them. So to me, it sounds like this services hub is going to be near the Future Food Bank, is going to be near numerous transit lines. So I think that's a good place to have it. I think if we provide services and they aren't used, then not only are we not helping people, we are also, it's not a wise investment of money to, to put something where in a place that's not being used. So that would be what I would say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi, Sasha.
Hi.
Hi. I'm about ready to start your 10 minutes here. So the City of Lacey has a $2.5 million economic development fund that we established out of reserves. And we also have a public art fund. But given the increasing costs of local government to make investments in our community, do you support these two initiatives and why?
Absolutely. Definitely the community art fund. I am a former art major, so I definitely believe in expression. And it's an outlet for the citizens of Lacey and for our youth. And I'm sorry, what was the second?
And we have a, a community, we have an economic development fund.
Economic development, absolutely. That's very important. I think that Lacey is on the precipice of something huge. People are moving here. I've only been here for three years. And in my short three years, I've noticed that the demographic has changed. So definitely, I think creating opportunities for economic advancement is pivotal for the people that are coming in for the current residents of this area.
Thank you.
If you were on the council, what is your vision for Lacey in the next 15 years to 20 years?
Again, as I mentioned earlier, I think Lacey is on, on the rise. It's growing. I think creating jobs and affordable housing for the people that are currently here. That's my vision. Just creating an environment to where people feel like they can grow and not have to move to other places to find opportunities.
Since we're in a campaign cycle for this fall's election, do you feel it's important that this appointee seeks elected office or not in November?
That's a very interesting question. So obviously, if I was the candidate, I wouldn't be like, yeah, I want to run. But I'm, I'm very confident in my abilities and I would like to have the public buy-in. So obviously, running for a campaign is a way to ensure that. So I'm all for it.
What do you see as the most important responsibility of city government and why?
I believe listening to the people. I, I can liken it to like having like frontline. So those are the people that are in the trenches, experiencing, living it every day. So have, listening to their voice and their needs, I believe is important.
Good evening, Miss Sasha. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
It's a beautiful name.
Thank you.
What makes you the most qualified candidate?
Ah, the most qualified candidate. Well, I, I pride myself on thinking outside of the box and being innovative. So I'm all, I'm very analytical. So I look at things from severent different, several different perspectives. And I think that has been to my benefit. So I'm always that person that brings something to the table that someone else may not have considered. And I would like to have an opportunity to do that with the council.
Great. Homelessness is a growing problem in Thurston County and beyond. So what do you think Lacey should be doing to address homelessness?
I really think the homeless population needs a sense of purpose. So kind of empowering them, maybe some right-to-work programs, really making them feel valued and more or less like a problem. So putting them, partnering maybe with businesses here in Lacey that'll set up something where they can go and work and create, generate income for themselves and kind of make them feel empowered again, you know, that they do matter, that they are a valuable contributing member of Lacey.
And that's your time.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we'll have everyone go back out and we'll start with a three-minute closing remarks.
Same order?
Same order.
We doing break or no break?
What?
Break or no break?
Oh, do we have a break right now?
It's up to you. It's written.
I don't think it's.
It says break.
It does say break, but I think let's just get through this, through, um, do the three minutes and, and then we'll have a break and then we'll come back.
Yeah. Earn our pay now.
Okay, we'll start your three minutes and you can go.
I moved to the City of Lacey just over eight years ago as a military spouse. And during that time, with intention, we moved from this area of Thurston County, all, from this area of Thurston County down I-5 to see where was the best place for us to live. Because we could go anywhere, never knew, right? But three times, I moved back to Lacey. Why? Because it is the work of previous council members and this council who have made this city a wonderful place to live, work, and play. And it is with intention that I live here. It is with intention that I sit before you and with dedication to the work that you currently do and that I wish to be a part of. Additionally, I bring perspective, a different perspective to the council. As a military spouse who lived here for a time without direction and without being able to find something within the community and eventually did because of this wonderful city. I also provide a perspective of a demographic in the city that is the highest demographic that we have, which are women between the ages of 24 and 35. I am 32. But I'm not here to ask you to check boxes. What I am here to ask is that you choose me to fill the vacancy for this council because I'm dedicated to the city, I'm dedicated to doing good work, and devoted to making good choices with you as a council to benefit the people of Lacey for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get the next candidate?
He's coming right there. I saw him.
There he is.
You can begin your three-minute closing remarks now.
You know, in my prior life, before retirement, I would have to come before the commission and present my budget. Well, usually what I would do is I'd bring in cheesecake and give them each a slice, hoping that would help with the budget I was presenting. Well, obviously, I haven't done that here. So in my closing remarks, I guess the reason I think you should pick me is because of my past experience. I've got a wealth of experience in government, in serving the public. And all of that I bring to Lacey. Originally, I was from New York, lived in Kansas for a long time, and then moved out here about three years ago. And I got to tell you, this place is really a charm. It's just beautiful. And I want to see this place develop, just like all the other candidates said, just a beautiful, beautiful place. Other than that, that's it. I don't have the cheesecake, but I wish I did.
Thank you. Thanks.
So you can begin your three-minute closing remarks now.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the council for this opportunity to, to interview and to partake in this. I think I make the best candidate because of my support of the city for the last 25 years that I have lived here. I've been an integral part of a lot of things that's been going on and part of the growth. I have a financial background. I have three financial certifications. I'm a certified, I was a certified public accountant, a certified fraud examiner, and a certified government financial manager. So I've come a long way towards helping the finance director with the finances, although our finance directors the last since I've been here have been very good. As a small business owner, I've been part of this city for over 20 years and supported with my BNO tax. And just been an integral part of it. My military background, for those who don't know, I'm, I'm retired military. I spent 20 years in the Army, served in Vietnam, and I speak fluent Hua. So I can fit in with the people at Joint Base Lewis McCard, where my wife works, by the way. Also support with a veteran service hub. I can relate to the people that are there. And finally, you know, you asked about the arts and I didn't mention, but I'm also, I'm on the Board of Directors for Ballet Northwest down in Olympia. So I've, and my son danced for them for over four years. So I've always been a big supporter of the arts. And finally, if you looked at my application, I have references from three former mayors of Lacey. Virgil Clarkson, Graham Sacerson, and John Haverson all supported me in my bid to apply for the city council position.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
Hello, everyone. As a city, we have the opportunity to try, to try something that could change lives in our community, to try something that could change the direction of our youth, and to try something that could change the forecast of so many of our families here in Lacey. Now, what I'm proposing here isn't easy, but let the words of JFK echo out here in this chamber. We choose to do things not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Getting this program off its feet will not be accomplished in the half year or so that I will be serving in this post. But I will make a commitment to the council and to the City of Lacey that if I'm appointed to fill Councilwoman Young's position, and quite frankly, even if I am not, I will make it a life goal of mine to get the ball rolling on piloting baby bonds into our city, hopefully continuing to devote time to this project, even if I am not in office as a councilman. You see, I truly love this city. And although I'm a little green behind the ears, as I said earlier, and younger than probably everybody in this room, I think we have an opportunity here to start something that really will bring a great amount of prosperity to our, to our youth and ultimately to our community as a whole. Obviously, this is not only an investment of money, but also of time. Many, likely everyone here before me, won't still be serving in their roles when the benefits of baby bonds start to take shape. But that's not what matters. What matters is doing something today that our children and our children's children will ultimately use to springboard into a better opportunity in Lacey, in Washington State, and in the United States of America as a whole. I know this because I've studied this. I've done research on this at a national level and breaking it down locally will be easier and more convenient on the numbers and on the finances. This is an investment for the future of the city that I love. Now, I know that there are time constraints tonight and sadly, that means I can't explain in detail what baby bonds are. But I'll lay out a brief premise on what the program would entail. In short, we as a city would give newborn babies savings accounts that would be worth tens of thousands of dollars by the age of 18 through low-risk conservative investments in the financial sector. They can then use those funds to pay for college, start a small business, or buy a home. The majority of familial wealth comes from homeownership. And sadly, less and less young people have the ability to afford a down payment on a house. This has led to an increased amount of wealth inequality in every place in our nation. I know the critics of this program will call it, will call it a handout of some sort, but that isn't what this is. What baby bonds will do is even the playing field, making it as fair for the generation coming up as it was for generations that came up before us. Wages are and have been stagnant compared to inflation in our economy. And if that hasn't changed, which seems unlikely to be honest, then we must create something that helps advance our upcoming generations. This will do that. I asked the council to consider me to fill Councilwoman Young's position so we could start working on helping start working on helping our youth take steps forward to having the same opportunity many of us have had, and making Lacey an example to the rest of America to look towards in terms of policy achievements. Thank you very much, everybody.
Got it. You nailed it. Jason, you can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
Thank you. I'd first like to address Ms. Carolyn Cox. You mentioned earlier about the homelessness. I mentioned that I'm a public defense attorney, I work a lot with homeless clients. I feel like if I was selected here, I'd bring that kind of voice to the, to the council. I also have a lot of mentally ill clients. I'd bring their voices to the council as well. One of the questions you might have for me would be, I run a business and I work full-time at the Thurston County Public Defense Office, how am I gonna have time to fulfill my obligations? I'd like to answer that two-part. First, my business is a partnership. I partnered with my mother, who has agreed to take over a lot of my responsibilities if I get the, get selected. Second is, I was running the business while attending Seattle University for Law School. For three years, I made the commute from Lacey to Seattle, five days a week. I'm really good at time management. That being said, I'm also really good with numbers. Running a business, I do the administrative side, business taxes, the federal taxes, social security, social security, Medicare, unemployment, LNI. I run all of those numbers. I'm really good. Any decision I make, I try to weigh the, the cost analysis. How much is this gonna cost? Is it worth it? The risks, return on investment. That's what I do for my business. Those are things that I bring to the table. I am persistent, I am dedicated, I am passionate. Those are just a few of the traits, many more, if I am selected, I will bring to the Lacey City Council. Those are my closing remarks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Mr. Druce, you can start your...
Talking about myself?
You can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
Well, I moved into the city of Lacey, I moved into my house in August of 2007, and I'm probably the ideal resident. I pay my taxes every year, I've never had to use the police, I've never had to use the fire department, I vote for the school levies, even though I have no children using the schools, I support the parks, and I've volunteered hundreds of hours to the mushroom festival, which the city helps to support. And I'm the person that signs the checks for the best national night out celebration in Thurston County. Two years ago, I was going to run for this seat, but unfortunately, my wife became sick, and I had to drop out, and I thank Councilman Stedman, always asks me how my wife feels. Thank you. In the last 10 years, I've attended many council meetings, I watch the council meetings on TV, and I read about you guys in the paper. And the one thing that, that's in common with everybody on the council that I get is that it's always, you always mention "I" or "me." If I'm appointed to the city council, before any, every vote is taken, I will ask, what do the people of Lacey want? It's not up to me, it's what the constituents want. And I learned that from, when I was going to run, I had the opportunity to sit down with the jewel of the city, Virgil Clarkson, and he said, "Everybody in the city counts." And he's 100% right. And it's a natural thing to label people. Even though this is a nonpartisan election, everybody has a label, whether they're a D, an R, or a C, or an L, and the only label I want is to be known as a CCC-L, a Concerned Citizen of the City of Lacey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Virgil.
Danielle, you can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
Well, thank you for this opportunity, for allowing me to address you guys and potentially be a candidate for the city council. I would like to say, as you're reviewing over this, one thing that I wasn't able to embark on is that I am a very passionate person. I find a way to give a voice to others that may not feel like they have a voice. I've always prided myself on serving people and the community. I think this would be a great opportunity as a next chapter in my life, as I've left the military and am pursuing others. I've served in the military as a medic, I have a degree in exercise science, so helping people has always been my number-one goal. I think this is a new way to give a voice to people and for myself, give me something to be passionate about. But I'm also a person that is very, I'm able to compromise. I may not see other people's point of view, I'll address my point of view and give an educated marks into what I feel passionate about, but I'm also open-minded and looking to see where others are coming from, and maybe help facilitate a compromise and reach, again, in the military terms of reaching your objective, meeting your goals, in the most efficient way for the people. I think this, again, is definitely a great opportunity. I moved down to Lacey just about over a year ago now, so I'm very on the cusp, but I moved from Tacoma, where I was raising my son, and it wasn't safe for us to go out in the streets. And I would like to help prevent that same problem that you see in Pierce County and in Tacoma area come down further to Thurston County. And as everyone is well aware with the homeless populations, we, we need to help facilitate the right choice in combating that crisis. Again, there's two issues at stake. There are the homeless population, and there's resources, we just need to guide them where. They also have the drug epidemic, where we need to make sure that we find ways to help them reach where they need so they can find help, because unless they want help, they're, they don't care, they'll just use the resources to their advantage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, just three minutes. Yep, yeah, you can, you can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
All right, thank you. I would like to share with you my work history and a little bit about myself to help you decide whether I might be suitable for this position or not. I've been a resident of Thurston County since 1964. I attended Chinook Middle School and graduated from North Thurston High School. While in my senior year in high school, I joined the Army under a program called Delayed Enlistment. It allowed me to choose my MOS, or Military Occupational Specialty, and I chose helicopters. Want to take a guess where all the helicopters were in 1970, a place called Vietnam. I arrived in country in 1971 and became a door gunner. I must not have been a very good shot, because two months later, I was promoted to crew chief, three months later promoted to flight engineer, and this was all when I was only 19 years old. Upon my return to the States, I was assigned to Fort Lewis to help establish a new helicopter company. I was then promoted to E-5 with just over two years of service. After my military service, I did not have a clear career path or plan for the future. It was suggested that I apply, apply for, for employment with the postal service, and I was immediately hired for Christmas help. I was then offered a career opportunity as a city letter carrier. I delivered mail in Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater for eight years. I was active in the letter carriers' union and became the vice president of the Washington State Association. In 1982, I applied for and was accepted for a management training position. This was a highly sought-after, fast-track position, as there were only two positions in the entire Pacific Northwest. I attended specialized schooling in Bethesda, Maryland, and Los Angeles, California. I trained for two and a half years in budget and accounting, human resources, mail processing, and customer services. After graduation, my first promotion was as the manager of the South Hill Branch in Puyallup, a very high-growth area, for four and a half years. My next promotion was to Lacey as manager of the Lacey Post Office for 10 years. I then arrived, I then served one year in Seattle at our district headquarters as an executive implementing a new automated delivery process. I was then promoted to postmaster of Bremerton, where I served my last 10 years. The reason I total my management experience of 28 years was to let you know, I have been a City of Lacey resident and homeowner for the past 40 years. Every one of my postal management positions, I commuted to and from Lacey. In closing, I know Lacey and I love Lacey. I would appreciate your consideration to allow me to contribute back to Lacey and allow me to help in shaping the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Gary. You can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and honorable council members. It is a privilege for me to be here tonight interviewing for the privilege, or the potential privilege, to serve the city. I realize this position is not a glamorous one, it's very much like my current position, one in which you must be a truly dedicated public servant, recognizing you play a part in a team committed as members who work as good stewards with limited resources to benefit our entire community. Lacey has grown tremendously over my lifetime. We face new and daunting challenges, economic and humanitarian. As I said before, we have the location, location, location that developers crave, but we need to be wise stewards of our community and how our precious land resources are developed, and remember that we, and not the developers, are answer to the community. Parks and public spaces must be conserved and enhanced, and our infrastructure must be continually updated to meet the needs of our growing population, and in addition, our city leadership must work with private and public partners to meet increased health and human crises of homelessness and drug addiction. All of us should feel comfortable in our community and safe in our city. It is very pro-business and very pro-community to stand up for law-abiding citizens and to assist our area homeless residents in being safer as we work together to get them housed. While the most vulnerable in our neighborhoods deserve a voice, it must not come at the expense of our business, community, and our housed residents. Must find a way in which we can all succeed together as a truly diverse community and benefit from shared resources as our city grows and prospers in the future. The renovation of the Veteran's Services Hub will secure additional networked programs for our military retirees, their families, and veterans. This gives us more of an opportunity to further advance our welcoming reputation to our military neighbors. My existing, my existing small business focuses on providing low- and no-cost marketing services to nonprofit organizations who serve veterans, homeless, and others locally and in communities just like Lacey across the nation, because we believe strongly that our shared assets will make our world a better place. Our future in Lacey is full of hope if we continue to be mindful of the lessons of our past and responsibility to our next generations. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. You can start your three-minute closing remarks now.
Thank you. So thank you, members of the Lacey City Council, for this opportunity to speak to you about why I believe I'm the best person to fill this position. First of all, I appreciate the time and thoughtfulness you put into this meeting. I know you took a lot of care in making sure we were all prepared, you had several meetings beforehand, so as someone who's sitting right here right now, I really appreciate that, so thank you. And I also appreciate the time that you and the city staff put together to be here tonight. Thank you for that. First thing, I just want to talk to you about my strengths and why I feel, what I will bring to this position if selected. So I look for the information that we don't have. I ask what we still do not know, and I ask what voices are we missing, who is not present or represented here, who do we still need to hear from, what do we still need to know? And then I go out to try to get that information, to ask others who know what may be missing, and to make sure we're getting a full picture of just what we need to know and how it will affect the city, the citizens of Lacey. Additionally, I'm a very strong collaborator, I'm experienced in analyzing a wide range of data and research, and I'm a very good communicator. So there's that. So I think I mentioned earlier, my daughter is nine years old. My family are near the beginning of our time here in Lacey. Well, we've been here for 13 years, but with engaging with her and engaging with the opportunities that the city has, so we have decades ahead of us in which we'll be living, playing, working, and thriving in the city. Additionally to the things I mentioned, I worked with military families through my business, and so while I don't know this experience personally, I have practical knowledge on working with and supporting military families through changes of station, trainings, and deployments, and I believe that I can help to make sure that Lacey continues to be a place that is welcoming for all our military families, no matter what stage they are in. So on behalf of my family, and those families, and all the residents of Lacey, it matters to me that our city manages growth in a strategic way that also pays attention to the services that are necessary to support those people who've chosen to live here. Friendly parks, accessible transit, safe biking and walking trails, welcoming and inclusive community events, city hubs with businesses that people can and actually want to go to, people-friendly streets, these are all part of making Lacey a city for all people. And the great news is that I see, as a mom, and as a family member, and as a community member, Lacey's doing a lot of this stuff. And I know that I can contribute to Lacey's future in a meaningful way that honors our city's lovely history, its military partnerships, its diverse population, and its place as the soon-to-be largest city in Thurston County. Way to go. So thank you so much for the time and the opportunity this evening, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. You can begin your three-minute closing remarks now.
All right. Well, thank you for having me again. So it's not lost on me that my experience doesn't equate to that of the council, but I will say that I have been operating on a path of being the most, the least experienced person in the room for the last two years, and I have prevailed every time, because if I don't know something, I'll find out. I'm a hard worker, and I think that speaks to my resilience of not letting the circumstances intimidate me, but taking it as an opportunity to learn and glean from my peers. At the core, you know, I value, you know, respect, trust, growth, development, and equity in everything that I do. I'm looking forward to adding value to the council and offering some of my ideas and looking for area of opportunities to be creative and take chances, but also consider the, the city of Lacey and their needs. As I mentioned earlier, I believe that affordable housing is very... As I mentioned earlier, I believe that affordable housing is very important in making sure that we provide security to those who might feel unsecure, or, yeah, unsecure in this current time with the growth and development that is happening. Although it's exciting, it might be a bit daunting for others with the change that's happening and maybe feeling like they're going to be forced to be pushed out. So that's one of the things that I really want to, like, focus on if I was to be selected to be a part of the council. And I thank you all for the opportunity. It's been a pleasure to be here before you and speak, and I hope whoever you choose is able to enrich the council immensely. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, first of all, thank you all for having the courage to put your name forward for this position. I know it's, it can be gut-wrenching to get in front of the council and talk about why you're the best candidate for this position, and so we really appreciate you taking the time to, you know, fill out the applications and to come and talk to us tonight by why we should select you to represent the people of Lacey for the next six, seven months, if not longer. So, thank you for that. We are going to take, I think about like a fifteen-minute break or so, and then we'll come back and we'll go into deliberations and nominations. So I'm going to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor? Can we just point them all? Because they're all so fantastic. Absolutely fantastic.
Yes. I mean, it really is, it makes me feel so great about, you know, being a part of this council and representing the city, when we have such amazing candidates here willing to, wanting to step up and serve alongside us and be a voice of the people. So I think it says a lot about our community that we have such great candidates, and that Lacey is really just an amazing place to, you know, live, work, and play. And again, thank you. Thank you all for being here and putting your name forward. So I'm going to adjourn for fifteen minutes.
So that would be eighteen people on the council, Jason.
Just very briefly, I just want to say thank you. Really appreciate all the time and effort that all of you put into being here today. As the mayor said earlier, it's a testament to the city that we live in that this many great candidates apply for the one open seat. So I wish you all luck. I also want to give a special thank you to all of our vets. It was a good percentage, and I forget exactly how many, but well over half of you, I believe, have served, and I want to say thank you for your service to the country.
Is there any other comments?
I'll just say that I was amazed there wasn't a bad applicant at all. You guys made a great job making this really tough. I can't tell you how much I appreciate your time and your willingness to serve the city that we all love. None of us would be here if we didn't love it. I'm intrigued by each and every one of you, especially the ones I didn't know tonight, and I hope you all consider filing week in, what is it, twelve days or something like that, because you guys are amazing. It was awesome to watch.
So, I too am really pleased to meet a lot of you that I didn't know. I thought I knew everyone, because I go to so many things, but, and you bring a real diverse kind of population dynamic to the interviews, and I think that is excellent. We, one of the nice things about it is you can, when you're actually eye-to-eye with someone, you can feel your personalities and get to know them better. you can feel your personalities and get to know them better. And I think that was really helpful. So, you know, it's, you can read all you want, but when you actually talk to someone or have them talk to you, it really helps a lot. So thank you very much.
Councilor Cox?
And I'd like to add to that. I know how hard it is to sit in that chair and try to collect your thoughts and give an answer because I sat in that chair a couple of years ago. And so congratulations, I think everybody did really, really well tonight. And on a personal note, I am looking forward to not being the newest person on the city council.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's a couple of very extremely important things we do as council members. The first thing, I think the most important thing we do is pass a budget. Because our city's budget tells you our values and our, our key priorities. By chance, our, one of the other extremely important things we do is what we're doing tonight is we get to select someone who will be the voice of, of the people. And as, as has been pointed out, that is our job, is, is to represent the citizens of Lacey as, as best we can. And so, you know, as, as the mayor, I have the privilege of nominating people to different boards and commissions on the city of Lacey. And I always try to do my best on making sure we have a diverse group of people that can bring that perspective, you know, of the people to this council. And so that's what I try to do when I'm in the position of selecting someone is sort of look to see what voice are we missing, what voice is needed? And I try to make my best decision, you know, decision based on who's the most qualified from, from that standpoint. And so that's what I'll, I'll be doing this evening. Is there any other questions? Well, then I will open up nominations for the council vacancy. Is there any nominations?
I would nominate T. Walton.
T. Walton? Any other nominations? Deputy Mayor?
I'll nominate Linda Zeeman.
I'll nominate Mr. Stuart Ridgway.
Richard Bukowski.
Natasha Nixon.
Any other nominations? I will nominate Kristen Jacobson. And that is six. So can I get a motion to close nominations?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We have closed nominations. So under this first round of voting, each council member will be able to vote on a candidate in order nominated. The question for each candidate will be, all those in favor of moving candidate, you know, and I'll, I'll go by their, their last name, forward onto the next round, say aye. Then all candidates receiving a majority vote will be moved forward to the next round. So council members have unlimited votes in this first round. So you could vote for one, more than one candidate in the first round. And after that, we will only have one vote going forward. So we're now into deliberations.
Could we, could you please list all the nominations, please?
So it's T. Walton, Linda Zeeman, Stuart Ridgway, Richard Bukowski, Sasha, sorry, Nixon, and Kristen Jacobson. That's six. So now we're into the deliberations.
I actually have a question for our legal counsel. Hi, Dave. So my, my question has to do with conflict of interest. And just, one of the applicants, in their application, has been endorsed by, by several council members in their, in their campaign that's already going. Is that a conflict?
I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to see which microphones were working, so.
So you, you have a question? Okay. No, no, that's fine. So the question is this, one of the applicants that, that we interviewed tonight, who's also one of the nominees, who's been, is in their paperwork that they filed with their application, mentioned that they were endorsed by a couple of council members in their campaign for that same position. Is that a conflict of interest?
For the nominee?
Yeah, they've already filed for office.
Right, and they've received endorsement before the interview process.
I don't think it's appropriate for me to give a legal opinion on that question right now. I, I guess I'll, I guess I'll defer to council members' own judgment on that. I don't think it's appropriate for me to make a comment on whether or not there's an applicant that has a conflict. I don't think there is for the purposes of council nominating, making nominations or voting on for the council vacancy.
Okay, that, okay, that answers my question.
So you don't, you don't think it's a conflict of interest? You don't?
My job is to, in this context, my job is to provide legal advice to the council members.
Yes.
And so I don't perceive any issue with that for the council members going forward in this context.
From a legal standpoint, there's no legal conflict, okay?
Correct, not for the council members.
Okay. Yes, I understand that.
Again, I'm just clarifying what my role is.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, I don't want to comment on, on a conflict for an applicant that, you know, it's not my position.
Okay, thank you. Can I, sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay, that's okay.
Just in fairness to the applicant in question, and in fairness to the council members involved, I think those decisions were made before there was a vacancy on the council and anybody knew we'd be going through that process. So I just want everybody to have a fuller understanding of that.
For full transparency, since that was brought up, it triggered, one of the applicants, I was listed as a
Personal reference.
Personal reference. Would that be conflict of interest?
That's different.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's kind of right down the same, you know?
For, for your information, I asked the same question earlier. I, I asked up our city manager, but we discussed it a little bit. Dave wasn't around, and to see was. And just as Councilmember Cox pointed out, that was an endorsement for them running for office before we, we knew this.
No, I understand, that's clear, but, and again, I understand that it may not be a legal conflict. There's still certainly an appearance of conflict, no different than recusing yourself because you've done business with someone, for instance, you know? To have made the endorsement of someone prior to the interview process, and I understand we didn't know there'd be an interview process at that time, so obviously it makes sense. I just think it's, it muddies the water quite a bit.
I think in all fairness, though, the person has already filed for council position. I, I think that carries a little bit of weight. I'm not a lawyer.
Is there any, is there any other deliberations? Go ahead.
Yeah, the only other point that I would bring is, for me, I think it's critically important that we appoint someone who is not running for the office, primarily because of how close we are to filing week. And people have announced, so we have announced candidates. Anyone who we would, would appoint, who is running for that office, would clearly get an unfair advantage in the race. And I think that's inappropriate and not the job of council. It's the people's job to elect people to office, not this council's job. So for me, we should be filling the seat with someone to fill the seat, not someone who's running for the office.
Fair enough. I think, Jason, you're out of your hand up next.
I'll take that, but a different tack. I think we have an opportunity this time, with the timing, to have a appointed person that's apolitical. And I think that opportunity is one that, that we should, we should try to take. So in other words, they'll be serving these last few months without any other aspirations or distractions. And I think that would be just a great opportunity for this council.
Deputy Mayor?
So I'm going to take the opposite side. My, when I heard some were not going to run, I asked, what, why are they bothering? Because they haven't put their whole heart and commitment into it to really try to do something with the council. And, and it's sort of like just occupying a chair. And I, some, through the interview process, kind of helped explain that, some didn't. But if you're going to want to be on the council, six months, you're not going to do anything except probably learn the names of your committee members. And even though you have, you know, I thought I had a lot of qualifications. And yet it took a whole lot of time to be able to move agendas forward and everything else. So really, six months isn't anything. And that's why I am kind of concerned about somebody not wanting to run. I'm just basically, but I, what I tried to do, just to be fair, is to take that mindset out of my head and review everybody on a level, even playing field, so that I would not prejudice myself.
Hindsight being 2020, I think that if we would have waited another 13 days to pass filing week, I think the waters would have been less muddied. Having said that, I think every, each and every one of you would make a fine council member. And you absolutely were transparent in your passion and love for Lacey. So I, I don't think we can get a wrong answer here. There's going to be, you know, one happy person and some, you know, the rest will be not as happy. But, you know, it's just the process and it is what it is, and appreciate you guys.
Councilor?
Okay, well, I think we're here tonight to find the best person for the job. And to me, it's less important about whether they're a candidate already announced or they're announced that they're not going to run. So I'm looking for the person who I think can do the job and who can be a good fit with this council. Somebody that we can work with, who can take a collegial approach to the job. And I guess if I have any bias in this, it would be that I, you know, we are losing a female council member and we're losing our youngest council member. And both those perspectives are ones I would like to see replaced, all things being equal. But that would be my bias.
Thank you. So, you know, I've, I've struggled with this, this question a little bit more than, than I thought I would. You know, I've been through this process now, this is the third time where we've, we've selected someone to fill a vacant seat. And, and every time up till now, it was sort of the council's expectation that the person run for the office. If we are going to, if we believe that the majority of the people believed the person is the, the most qualified candidate to represent the people, then it would make sense that we'd want that person to continue in that role, if the majority of people want that. So this past Friday, actually, I belong to the mayor's forum. And so all the mayors in Thurston County get together. And I sort of ran it by them. I was like, hey, I'm kind of in this weird circumstance. I kind of want your, want your advice. And they pointed something out to me that I've, I've sort of really taken at heart. And I think Harold actually said this as well. We are not in control of anything, but this person being on this council between now and, and November, when the people elect the person, that's all we're in control of. We can't, we're not in control if they file, if they don't file. We, we, we're not in control of any of that. That's up to the individual council member or individual person who's going to run. I think it's really our job to try to select the person that we believe would best represent the people of Lacey and do their job, the best job they possibly can while they're here. So I, I wouldn't want to be in a position, situation where, where I'm sort of in right now with, with my nominee. I think, Kristen, you did an amazing job. I really appreciate everything you had said and your perspective. And that's why I nominated you to go on to the next round. And so it's actually a little disheartening to know that we could have you for six months and then you, you decided, you know, you're not going to run. And so that's the only time you would, you'd be on the council. That's, as is pointed out, that's six months of investment of, of the, the public funds to get you up to speed to represent the people. And just when you're sort of finally getting to that point where you've gotten your feet, you know, underneath and understand all this, how much it takes, all the time and energy it takes, then you would not be in the position any longer. So that, that's, that's unfortunate. So, but we're not in control. All we're in control of is, is this time period between now and when the people vote. We're not in control of anything else. We can't, we're not in control of who votes for the person, who files, who doesn't file. That's completely out of our purview. All we, all we can do is, is, is vote for the, who we think would best represent the people of Lacey. And, and that's the only thing we're in control of this evening.
Just one very quick thing. Also, this isn't a legal binding document, so they could say no or yes or whatever or not.
That's true. So we have deliberated, we have closed nominations. So now we're going to the first round of voting. So all those in favor of moving candidate Walton forward to the next round, say aye.
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 Three. All in favor of moving candidate Zeeman forward to the next round, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three. Yes?
We need to.
Who said, who said aye on the last one?
Well, for T. Walton?
Walton.
T. Walton. Let's do T. Walton.
Okay, so for T. Walton. Okay, that's three. For Zeeman, that's four. For Stuart Ridgway? That's, I'll go with that, that's four. For Richard Bukowski? That's two. Oh, three. For Sasha Nixon? That's four. For Kristen Jacobson? It's all six. So moving forward is Linda Zeeman, Stuart, Sasha, and Kristen Jacobson. Could you repeat those again? So moving forward now is candidate one is Linda Zeeman. Candidate two is Stuart Ridgway. Candidate three is Sasha Nixon. And candidate four is Kristen Jacobson. So now we go into the second round of voting. Council members will vote on each candidate in the order nominated. Council members are limited to one vote in the second round and all further rounds. I.e., a council member can only cast one affirmative vote in the second round. And all those, the question will be, all those in favor of appointing candidate either one through four, as I list their last name, to, to fill the council vacancy, say aye. And the first candidate receiving a majority of votes from council, four or more, suspends any further voting. And that nominee will And that nominee will receive the majority of the, who's received the majority of the vote will be sworn in our next regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could you please repeat the order one more time for me?
So the order number one is Linda Zeeman, Stuart Ridgway, Sasha, Sasha Nixon.
No Sasha, right?
Yeah, sorry. It's Sasha and Sasha. And Kristen Jacobson. So...
And so again, just for my own, please forgive me. We get one vote, and the candidate with, the first candidate with four votes is selected. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you want one minute to think? Yes.
No music, but...
So do we, do we want a moment to contemplate here? This is a big vote.
It's a big vote.
Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this for five minutes.
But we should, we should not be consulting.
Nope, nope.
It's just a racist.
Right now, as it is in five minutes, I'm prepared to vote.
Are you?
I asked for three minutes.
Councilmember?
I'd like a couple of minutes to think, but...
You, councilmember? Councilmember, deputy mayor?
I'd like a couple of minutes.
Well, it looks like a majority of us wants a couple of minutes, so I'm going to adjourn this for, this meeting for five minutes.
If we cannot get to a decision tonight, we can recess and take it up at the next council meeting or whenever this council chooses.
Thank you.
I thought five minutes was bad.
Are the same four people still all there? See, just as an example, two people were to get three votes, and the other two got one vote each, just to say. Is the next round just those two with the three votes, or is it still all four candidates?
Still four.
All four are still there, correct? Okay, thank you.
Until one of those four gets a majority.
How many rounds?
Until, as many rounds as it takes.
We're not going to make a decision.
Ninety days.
Ninety days, there you go.
So I'm going to call, I'm going to call this meeting back into order. And before, before we take this vote, I just want to sort of talk about what's going through my mind. I'll give everyone an opportunity to talk what's going through their mind, because I think a lot, there's a lot here to consider. And this is a really tough decision.
Yeah. I don't think you would, but by accident, I wouldn't want you to. During this discussion, we shouldn't be tipping our hat, is that right?
No, I think we can talk about the qualifications of each of the people and talk about where, you know, what's on our mind.
Being careful not to dip our hat, of course, I would say.
Do our best.
We're not lobbying.
Yeah, not lobbying. I just want to tell you what's going on my mind. You can tell you what's going on your mind and see where we're at. This is really, really important. You know, I, I, there were some really good interviews tonight, and I'm really, I am, I am struggling. You know, I, I really like the fact that, you know, Linda, you've been very dedicated for a long time, and you're prepared, and I can see your passion. You know, I think Stuart, obviously, you've given to, a lot to this city, and would be someone who could, you know, could step in and, you know, be a, a good representative for a short time. You know, I, I really like, you know, Ms. Nixon's background and perspective that she could bring to this council, and I think that's a very important perspective. And it's very intriguing, because I think it's a needed perspective. And, you know, Kristen, you, great interview, and you did great. But, you know, I, I am still struggling with this, the time commitment and going forward and placeholder, not placeholder. And so I'm really having a hard time figuring out that part of it. So that's where I'm at. I don't know if that helped anything, but that's going through my mind.
You should mention the other candidate, too, to be fair and balanced.
He did mention all...
My, my, excuse me, you did, thank you.
I so badly wanted to rip this Band-Aid off and get this over with. I mean, it's, it's time. We, you know, it's tough, no matter what. I think it's time to vote.
Anyone else?
I would just say, I truly believe that any one of the four who are here for the second round would do a great job. I mean, I think any of you could fulfill the obligations and help us in making the decisions for the next several months. And I think all of you just did a great job tonight in the interviews. So I think any one of you would do well. You know, I understand your, your issue with those running or not running. A few moments ago, you made the comment, though, that that wasn't part of the decision. And in your later comments, you made it very much part of your decision, so I'm a little confused by that.
I'm struggling, I'm struggling with it. It's, you know, and I agree, I think we should be picking the, probably the best person to fit the job, period.
And I think that's our obligation, is to put someone here that can do the job. Again, you know, you know my feelings as far as person running or not running, and it's simply because I don't believe it's our, our position in council to give someone an advantage. And the difference to me this time and in past times when we've done this, so I was here for one other appointment process, and actually was part of the appointment process before that, the first one that you were probably involved in, I was actually sitting where you guys are sitting and was not selected for the seat. You know, the difference here in those two is this is much closer to the timeframe. In those times, there were no announced candidates. It was earlier in the process, nobody had made any public announcement, they were running. We had no idea, you know, there were no known candidates as there are this time. For me, that's a very big difference.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I have a little different, remembering last time, a little bit different than that. We had, I know Carolyn Cox had announced that you were running, I know Ken Ballsley announced that he was running.
Neither of them got the appointment.
I know, but they both announced that they were running, and so we were in the exact same position. But anyway, councilmember? Do you have anything to add?
Not to that particular thread, but I just, I guess I would encourage all of us to just dig deep and think about who you'd like in the chair next to you, and can that person carry the water that's necessary to be carried? On the question of whether you're going to be a candidate or not be a candidate, I mean, I hope the finalists who are announced candidates understand, you know, the weight of carrying the load of a city council member and adding the weight of having to run a campaign on top of that. It is very, very daunting, but I don't feel like any of us should second guess any of your ability to do that. So I'd just like to set that question aside and move on.
Mayor? My comments from before stand, but I just concur that this entire field is fantastic. Thank you very much for applying.
Anything, deputy mayor?
Only that every time I say, okay, it's going to be, and then I change my mind. Other than that, it's, I don't have much to add. It's, we picked four really good candidates, and I could have picked three others that I thought were really good as well with that group, but, so that was hard. It's hard.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Please. All those in favor of moving candidate Zeeman for, all those in favor of appointing candidate Zeeman to fill the council vacancy, please raise your hand. All those in favor of appointing candidate Ridgway to fill the council vacancy, raise your hand. All those in favor of appointing candidate Nixon to fill the council vacancy, raise your hand. Well, doesn't look like we can get there. All in favor of appointing candidate Jacobson to fill the council vacancy, raise your hand. Nope, we're out of hands.
Just for clarification, because we had voted already, we couldn't vote again, or because I would have voted for the other three. Well, I know, but, right, we're given one vote, and I'd voted, so, and there's three people after that and couldn't vote for them.
So we didn't get a majority, and so we're right back where we're at.
Starting again?
Yep.
There's nothing in the rules for a second round within this round, for like, you know, majority or most votes or anything like that.
We've already, we've already set the rules.
Rules are set.
The rules. And so we...
So I'll jump in then.
Okay.
I voted for Stuart Ridgway, and I, forgive me, councilmember Stedman, I did interrupt you, I apologize. We run out of hands and run out of votes, so we can't do more than one vote. But, so I will just defend why I voted for Stuart on this round. A long time of service in this community. Veteran, financial background, and his responses, I thought, on his interview were fantastic. I think he has also made it clear that he's here to serve for this year, and that's the deal. And there has been debate all around that there might be some value to that. I think there is value to that, and I would encourage the council to reconsider their vote for Stuart for those reasons.
So, you know, I voted for Sasha because I really appreciate her perspective, and I think it's much needed on the council. And we keep talking about that the city of Lacey is the most diverse city in Thurston County, and yet we do not have that representation on it. And so, and that, I wanted to make sure you knew how much I appreciate your perspective, and I think it's, I think it's needed on the council, and that's why you received my vote, and so...
There is no wrong vote here. My nominee didn't make it through the first round. Sorry, T. went to battle for you, buddy. You know, like I said, there's no wrong, no wrong answer here. I voted for Linda because, number one, she's announced already, number two, she's a business owner, number two, she's a minority. But you're all great, you know what I mean? It's like, what combination is going to happen from here? I don't know. But, I mean, second round, second, second round, here we go.
Lenny, first.
So, yeah, I mean, as we're talking about why we cast the votes that we cast, I obviously voted for Stuart Ridgway. The reason, pretty much Jason covered it, but for me, the years of service to this community were the linchpin for me on that. You know, Stuart, as I think most, everyone on council, if not all of you know, his involvement in the Lacey Chamber of Commerce, his involvement in, just in this community in general for, you know, several decades now. I don't, I mean, we have all great candidates, but no one else here, in my opinion, has had that length of time, that length of service to this community. Part of that just because you're all much younger than Stuart, but, you know, so you couldn't have had as much time. But Stuart has dedicated a lifetime to this city, and that's why he has my support.
Deputy Mayor?
So, and I've known Stuart forever, or a long time, and, you know, he's involved with the Kid Waller and stuff. One of the things I was a little concerned about is that he is a really, really strong financial advisor person, but we already have a financial director, so I'm, you know, the breadth of what we need might go beyond that. I thought Linda's application was strong, and her performance was strong. I thought Kristen Jacobson's interview was strong. I was, and, and her application. But again, I had to think where she would fit. And Sasha Nixon, I thought her interview was excellent. I'm not sure as, the, the application was as strong as I thought it deserved to be. So that was one of the reasons why I didn't vote. But I thought about it. So that's kind of why I thought about Linda, is that both, both the application and the interview were strong. She knows what she's pretty much talking about. There was one thing she had mentioned that, about being part of the state business filing thing, we already do that, but she, you know, you can't judge somebody that doesn't know that, really, so. So that is kind of why I... So, so, that is kind of why I voted for her. But if somebody has other arguments, I might change, who knows?
Councilmember Cox, do you?
I think my observations would pretty much echo what the deputy mayor had to say about Linda. I, I mean, I think of all four of you, in fact, I nominated Sasha because I would really like to, like to see your voice here as well. My vote for Linda came down to, I think, the person who's ready to hit the ground running. And we need that on council. It's, it's hard to train up. It does take a good six months to get your feet under you as a council member. And I just have to look at who's, who's ready to roll because we have some really daunting decisions ahead of us in the very immediate future.
Could I say one other thing? So, one of the other strong things what Sasha brought is the idea of art. And I, you know, no one else really spoke to that being a creative connection to economic development and stuff. And I thought that was extremely important, being, being a poet myself. So, yeah.
Okay, well, we're gonna go through another round. Obviously, Linda is very prepared and had a great application and also represents a lot of what we, I've just left with councilmember Young. You know, they share a lot of the same characteristics. And I really miss you, councilmember Young, wherever you are in the back. So, we're opening this back up, if that's all right?
Please.
All those in favor of appointing candidate Zeeman to fill the council vacancy, raise your hand. That is it. So, Linda Zeeman has received four votes and she will be appointed at the next regular council meeting. Have we reached the end of the...
Congratulations.
I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.